All right, everyone, it's 7:30. Welcome to this evening's meeting. We are called to order. Folks, if you could please rise and pledge the flag. Thank you. And Angela, roll call, please.
Saba Al Sayed.
Here.
Amy Funahashi.
Here.
James Fee.
Here.
Megan Nolan.
Here.
Diane Gundrum.
Here.
Tony Heil.
Here.
Mr. President, I note for the record, we were at executive session from approximately 7 o'clock to approximately 7:25 with regard to personnel matters and litigation.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Mr. Truman, go ahead and take it away.
All right. Thanks very much. First up for council consideration, approval of the May 10, 2022, meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion.
I will second that motion.
Motion from Mr. Heil, seconded by Ms. Funahashi to approve the May 10 meeting minutes. Any questions from council? Or the public? All right. Seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that's unanimous. Thank you.
Next, for council consideration, approval of the May 24, 2022, meeting minutes.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Heard a motion from Mr. Fee, seconded by Ms. Gundrum, to approve the May 24 minutes. Do we have any questions from council? Or the public? All right. Seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that's unanimous. Thank you.
All right, and thank you. And next up, we have the presentation of the 2022 Morales Scholarship Award to Ms. Mary Sheroud. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Sheroud has just graced us with her presence. Just a brief reminder, we had, we had made the award announcement last meeting. Mary, for, for those in the audience who aren't aware, is a graduating senior from Upper Marion this, this summer. She will be attending Temple this fall. Has a very, very high GPA, a lot of academic accolades from NHS, Spanish NHS, Women's Track and Field, the Octagon Club, and that's just the tip of the iceberg. And I believe Mary wants to study psychology when she begins Temple this fall. So, again, we had a great crop of applicants for the scholarship this year, and Mary, Mary stood out amongst them. So, a round of applause, if we could, please, for Mary Sheroud, and we're going to take a photo.
You can come on up, Ms. Sheroud.
Oh.
We have a check for you somewhere. Angela has it.
There we go.
Ms. Sheroud, if you want to, I think Ms. Funahashi, councilwoman Funahashi was chairing the committee for the scholarship. She'll meet you there.
Thank you, Angela. It's my pleasure to give you this. Good luck with everything. So much.
Hang out there for a photo. Nobody gets away without it.
Beautiful. Thanks so much.
You're going to have so much fun at Temple.
Go Owls.
Mary, you are more than welcome to stay around for the rest of the meeting. However, you know, if, if you guys wanted to head on out, we would certainly not hold it against you. So, thank you again, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Next up, for council consideration, Resolution 2022-36, acknowledging June 8 as Frosty Falls Day in Bridgeport Borough.
And I'll just make a comment. I'm not going to read out the entire resolution, but it is all very glowing. For the benefit of the public and the benefit of the, of the record, Laura Houck, who is a Bridgeport resident, owner-operator, so to speak, at Frosty Falls that we all know, she went through a lot in the last year with the flood and the hurricane at her business, at her home. And not only did she recover, she recovered with absolute flying colors and did it while helping her neighbors, while helping the community, and frankly, being an example for everyone. So, it is council's pleasure today to acknowledge June 8 as Frosty Falls Day. And with that, I'd welcome a motion from someone.
I'll make a motion to make Frosty Falls Day.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Mr. Heil. We have the, the second from Ms. Nolan, who wants to oppose it for the resolution acknowledging June 8 as Frosty Falls Day in Bridgeport Borough pending nationally, according to the newscast. Any questions or comments from council on that? We're from the public. Woo! All right. Seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is unanimous. Congratulations. Ms. Houck.
Congratulations.
And Laura, if you could come up, we'll take a photo.
What's that? Oh, we're doing a picture. I don't really want to have to say much, but obviously, we're going to have a party every year.
Actually, I mean, make a few, say a few words if you'd like to, put them into the mic, so we have them on record, if you'd like to. You don't have to.
Just get ready to party.
All right.
What do we do? Do we go?
What do you want to do?
I don't know. Like, I mean, like, I don't want to do like Batman, right?
Not a prom picture.
Honestly, yeah. I can do, I can do this foot, side to the side.
That's a prom picture.
This, right.
There you go.
Wait, before we stop the pic, can we, we should get a picture with the whole family, because Frosty Falls is a family affair. And how often are we going to do this? I mean, we could do it monthly, but we probably shouldn't.
I was so excited that he wore the shirt with the knife on it.
Let's get that in the paper.
He's in the back. He's in the back.
All right, cool.
Thank you.
Good job, man.
All right, cool.
Do we have permission to leave, too? Because I wanted to go back there. We have to get
back happy.
You're watching.
Okay, yeah, we're doing the 50% for Upper Marion community cover right now, so.
Oh, come back there.
Yes. Thanks, guys.
And you do that every night. There's a council meeting, so it's hard for us to go.
Well, give you guys a reason to go as soon as you leave here. Thanks, guys.
Let's wrap it up.
Okay, next up for council consideration, Resolution 2022-37, acknowledging June as Pride Month in Bridgeport Borough.
And I can, unless somebody else in council wants to jump in, I'll just make a, a comment about this as well without reading out the entire resolution. Folks should know by now that June as Pride Month is a recognition of the Stonewall uprisings up in New York City, back in the early 60s, I believe. If somebody knows the, the year, say so. But it was when the LGBT community started to push back against a lot of oppression and, frankly, violence in the city and in that area and nationwide. So, we commemorate that by honoring Pride Month, as many communities do around the country. And I'm very proud that this council takes this action. I think this is our third or fourth year doing this. So, thank you, everybody, for, for being on board with this. And with that, I'll certainly entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have the, the motions from Ms. Gundrum, and it's seconded by Ms. Nolan. Do we have any other comments from council? Feel free to jump in if you'd like.
Just to add a comment, I know you talked about violence against the LGBT community from then. Sadly continues and not necessarily at a decreasing rate lately. There was just this massive arrest in Idaho, which is a hotbed of very far-right violence and neo-Nazi activities. And they were directed towards an LGBT event, and that's where a lot of the hate online can direct to, are the most vulnerable people. And so, that's a negative. A positive is that the Frosty Falls community, who is just here, was just raising money for that. And I think it shows that, you know, it's nice that we can do this as a council, but the people of Bridgeport, the businesses, the residents, are all uniting in their own ways. And that's something positive, because it reflects on our whole community as well, that we're united on this.
Thank you, Mr. Houck. Comments from the public on this before the vote? All right. Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that's unanimous. Thank you, council.
All right. Next up, for council consideration, Resolution 2022-38, appointing Katie Fulmer to the current vacancy on the Bridgeport Human Relations Commission.
We are all good news tonight. Again, just for the record briefly, the Bridgeport Human Relations Commission was established a few years ago. It's an avenue for folks in town who feel like they're being treated unfairly because of one of, one or another protected class. So, we're proud to have that on board. And Katie, thank you for being willing to serve on it. I'm glad. Hoping to take a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion from Ms. Funahashi, seconded by Ms. Nolan, to appoint Katie Fulmer to the Bridgeport Human Relations Commission. Any other comments from council? Or the public?
I'm very proud of my wife.
Excellent comment. Noted. Make sure that makes the minutes. All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That's unanimous. Thank you. And thank you, Katie.
All right. Next up, for council consideration, Resolution 2022-39, authorizing an agreement between GEO decisions and the borough of Bridgeport to provide reverse 911 emergency notification services to the community.
You want to, I know we talked about this before, but just because we may have different folks listening this time.
Yeah, sure. This, this is one of the implementation steps that the borough was taking post Ida. Not only will we be able to utilize this system in the event that there is, God forbid, another large-scale emergency that the community has to face, however, it can be, its, its, its uses and, and, and facilities are manifold. You can use it for a bunch of different media purposes. So, in short, it gives the residents the ability to log into or create a, a unique identifier to get onto this GEO decisions or notify, I believe the software is actually called Platform. And they can choose landline, cellphone, what have you, to, to put in there and receive notifications related to whatever ultimately we use it for. But obviously, first and foremost, would be for emergency preparedness.
I'll make the motion to authorize the agreement.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Ms. Nolan, seconded by Mr. Fee, for the resolution authorizing the agreement for the reverse 911 services. Any questions or comments from council?
Just a couple of questions. One, one thing I brought up many times in talking about this is how it's implemented and rolled out. So, are we going to have, I don't know, Keith, are you the one that's going to be getting the information out to people? Because if it's a reverse 911 and Katie is the only one on it, it's like, that's great for Katie, but it's not helping the rest of the residents. So, is there, so do we have to develop some sort of plan for implementing it, or does it go through the company?
Mr. Heil, there is a, implementation is a joint partnership between the company and the municipality. Effectively, we need to provide them with a list of all of the residences and/or structures in the community. And then we reach out via postcard in order to offer them the ability to, to, to log in and take advantage of this.
I know we had, we had people volunteer to help roll this out as well, especially the, the neighborhoods that were affected by the flood. Folks will go door to door and hand out information, so I think, certainly for that neighborhood, we'll, we'll have plenty of help with that.
Great. And I'm excited for this, you know, you can call it a 119 system even, because it's reverse 911, right? But I, but it's also almost been a year since the flood. And I know that having a reverse 911 system isn't on its own enough to placate people's very serious concerns about what happened. So, I don't know, we need to just make sure we don't leave this as the, we did that and we're good. I know we ordered a number of new things through Capitol Projects. Mr. Truman, you did that, and the police and fire came together on that. But if before the one-year anniversary, we can have a report of what, what is being done, including those things that were bought, and this, so we can let the residents know how we've adapted and address those concerns, so we can hopefully address them more accurately or more fully, that's all.
Certainly.
So, we do have the motion on the floor. Any other comments from council? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Then that's unanimous. And you know what I did, I apologize, I forgot to ask for public input on that. Any comments on that specific resolution? Katie, you shared your thoughts before, but we got, it's passed and rolling now. Thanks.
All right. Next up, for council consideration, authorization to advertise the 2022 Street Paving Project bid package. Members, excuse me, members of council, members of the public, this is a synopsis of the primary streets that are going to be included in the bid package now. I'll make the caveat, or the disclaimer, that included in the bid package and ultimately paved in 2022 may very well be very different things when, once we face the reality of where prices are coming in for bids. As we all are aware, post COVID and now in this economic situation our country finds itself in, materials and labor costs in general are, are skyrocketing, particularly highway construction materials and, and construction materials in general. I will say that, you know, we do have our, we're going to contribute towards this paving project, two years, if not three years' worth of community development block grant awards, well over, or somewhere, yes, I'm sorry, in the vicinity of about $213,000 there. We have a local match that is built into each one of those grant applications as well. And we have the potential to include the state and local recovery financial funds to appropriate towards this. So, depending on where numbers come in, we can certainly knock out a large chunk of these. In a perfect world, we would be handling all of these streets, in addition to a couple of spot treatments or corrections on some, some old trench work that's failing on Mill and Fifth. And is that 8th or 9th, on 9th Street as well, in addition to the list you see here? At a minimum, there are a priority, there are some priority streets on here. Holstein, Prospect, Fraley, Marion, those streets are in the most dire need of repair and will be repaired categorically this year, as well as second, third, and, and front. If we can, and the bids come out favorably, we will address the remainder of the streets that you see on the list as well.
Mr. Truman, thank you for the detail on that. So, we are looking for a vote to authorize the bid package here, correct?
Correct.
All right.
I'll make a-
Authorization to advertise, yes.
I'll make a motion to advertise.
I will second that motion.
Motion from Mr. Heil, seconded by Ms. Funahashi, to go ahead and authorize the borough to advertise the street paving bid package. Any other questions or comments from council?
Just a comment that I know, Mr. Truman, you've done a great job at being very comprehensive on the needs for the paving projects. But at some point in the next few months, if we can get a good rundown, we don't need to make a big presentation of it, just of where things have stood for the last few years, where you see things updated, because I think it's kind of hard for us to remember that 5th Street was done, or-
Yeah, this is part of a five or six-year project, wasn't it?
Yeah.
No, I'm just, yeah, that's, I'm curious about, yeah.
That, that's correct. Quite frankly, with, hopefully, fingers crossed, with this year's paving project, we will have paved every, just about every segment of street in the borough, as well as several alleys, within the course of the last six years.
Thank you, Mr. Truman. Any other questions from council, or the public on the street paving? Yes, Ms. Shong.
Kim Shong, 439 Bush Street. I see it has Holstein from Fourth to Coats there. Is that going to address the big dip in the road in Coats, or is that on the Upper Marion side?
No. So, the way, Kim, because boroughs were created before townships were, were, were established and incorporated bodies of government before, before townships, when townships came into existence, if you, a border street, nine times out of 10, the responsibility to maintain it defaulted to the older municipality, which is why, despite the fact, you know, we abut, you know, Borough Line Road, Coats Street, these, these, these streets that, that, you know, Upper Marion, it's 50-50 split, Upper Marion versus Bridgeport, Bridgeport owns the responsibility to maintain it curb to curb. So, yes, that's going to be the full width of curb. That, that whole horrendous intersection of Holstein and Coats is going to be rectified.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments from the public? Thank you, Ms. Shong. All right, then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That's unanimous. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. And with that, that portion of tonight's proceedings has concluded, and we can move forward to unfinished business. Are there any items of unfinished business that anybody, excuse me, anybody on the dais has this evening? All right. Seeing none, we can proceed to committee reports.
Well, I was not here on Sunday when the Bridgeport Garden Club did their first event where they weeded by the In-N-Out. So, I will toss it over to whoever wants to give an update for what happened on Sunday.
Yeah, I don't mind. So, Amy and I were there. We had about a dozen volunteers come out, and we spent a couple hours weeding and kind of shaping up some of the plants down there, taking up the trash and the compost, and had fantastic volunteers, really fun time with fellow community members. The, the goal is to go three more, two more times and space as well, in addition to help from some more volunteers. The garden club was established last month and hoping to kind of tackle a couple of areas in, in town and beautify the spaces. So, looking for more members. If anyone wants to join, you have a Facebook page and a website. So, definitely excited for more members to join, come have fun with us, and to help us beautify the town.
It looked great. I drove by and took a look at it. It looked very nice.
Yeah. If you look at the before and after picture, I think it even shows more.
Awesome. Thank you very much. And just, just to note, I will be there this upcoming Saturday, June 18. We will be back, I'm sorry, June 18, at 9:00 AM this, this Saturday. I will be there to help with the beautification of that area. So, if anybody wants to come out and lend a hand with that, we will be there at 9:00 AM on Saturday.
All right. Thank you both. Any other committee reports this evening?
I would like to give an update from the Events Committee. This Saturday, the 18th, we'll be having our second Bridgeport Movie Night. We'll be showing Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles. So, get excited. And we'll have our free popcorn for the kids. We'll start right around sundown. And then next week, we'll have our Bridgeport Carnival coming back again this year. So, get excited for that. That'll be going on from Tuesday, the 21st, to Saturday, the 25th. So, I hope to see you guys there. Thanks. Oh, and I believe we're also having a community yard sale date soon. If, Keith, you don't mind giving some information on that?
Yes, that is, excuse me, Ms. Funahashi, that's correct. The, the community yard sale is also Saturday, June 25th, which is the same, the, the last day of the carnival. I believe, provided folks email, either phone the borough at 610-272-1811, or email myself or Angela Rehill at the, at our borough addresses, which are available on the website. We, we like it for people to register so that the borough can, can put forth a, a list of all the participating homes. It's just to, to keep a paper trail and so that we have a list. The whole point of the community yard sale day is that the standard $25 registration fee is waived and, you know, gives the community an opportunity to clean out their garages and attics and see if one man's junk is another man's treasure. That's all. Thank you. There will be additional social media postings on that in, in the coming days before Saturday.
And I know for the carnival, a number of us have agreed to volunteer, but do we have enough volunteers for everything? We're good?
I think we're square. Yes, sir. All right. Seeing no further committee reports, we can move forward to the mayor's report. Mayor Jack Seer.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just got a few things this evening. Want to, I guess, give everyone an update since our last meeting. On Memorial Day, I was truly humbled by the annual Catholic War Veterans Event to honor and remember the veterans who made the ultimate sacrifice for us and our country. It's actually one of my favorite events here, as it's a reminder of the individuals who represent the best of the Bridgeport community. So, thank you if you were able to attend. On, it's May 31st, I visited the Bridgeport Paint Center, where I was really astounded to see so much variety in their offerings, to help with so many different types of home projects and not just painting. They offer a lot, so I encourage everyone to patronize them for their painting and general home DIY needs. On June 1st, I, along with Councilperson Nolan, was invited to join in the West Concha Hawkins raising of their pride flag in honor of Pride Month. So, I'm really excited to attend events that promote community and that provide a welcoming environment for people of all backgrounds. So, I'm also pleased by council's resolution this evening to acknowledge that June is Pride Month here in Bridgeport. So, thank you for doing that, guys. Last Saturday, it'll be the June 4th, it was a really busy day here in the borough. I was really lucky to be able to say hello to our newest business owner, Mike, from Fourth Street Tattoo at their grand opening event. It's a really great space. I hope you get a chance to check it out if you haven't already. The shop's interior is beautiful, and it's only foreshadowing the greatness to come. And afterwards, I visited Reach Indoor Climbing and Fitness to celebrate their third birthday. It's really wonderful to see how established they've become here in our borough and how far their reach into the world has gone. They've actually brought in visitors from around the whole country, and they really allow for everyone to experience the best of what we have to offer. Last Wednesday, I joined the Frosty Falls team as they welcomed Good Morning Philadelphia and Kelly Drives, Bob Kelly. He shared the world's best ice cream spot with the greater Philadelphia area during their morning show, and I'm looking forward to seeing their spotlight on Kelly Drives when it airs in the next few weeks. So, make sure to stay tuned to their social media pages to learn when the bit premieres. And you should just follow them anyway, because they're wonderful and delicious. And last but not least, my next office hours will be on Thursday, June 30th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM downstairs in my office here at Borough Hall. So, if you have any thoughts, ideas, concerns, whatever, feel free to drop by. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, mayor. Moving on to the chief's report. Chief Beretta.
Good evening, everyone. A few things. Bridgeport Police and Officer Sell participated in, this is our, I guess, third Race for Peace event. This is Upper Marion's Race for Peace event, our partners, over at the mall last Saturday, the 11th of June, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. So, it's great to see these other police departments that want to pull together for a great cause, especially in these trying times. Followed that, we had our bicycle rodeo, we co-hosted with the Bridgeport Elks. We tuned up bikes. We had the PA Elite Athletes donated about eight bicycles. So, we got bicycles, bicycle helmets, lighting, and tune-ups for, for the kids' bicycles. And that will continue on for our next event, which was going to be the Bridge, the Bridgeport National Night Out and Race for Peace event. So, again, that'll be our third Race for Peace event. And then we'll have, we'll follow up on that. We'll have prizes, including children's bikes to double down on, bicycle helmets, appropriate lighting, since our kids are now out of school. We participated- We participated with the Bridgeport Elementary Schools Field Day. You might have seen some pictures of me being pushed around on little carts, those poor kids and their little backs. We also participated in the Bridgeport Elementary School's graduation ceremony, so we were happy to be there last week, it was a wonderful event. I want to congratulate Officer Sell for completing 10 years of full-time service with the police It's a, it's a tough job, and so it's nice to get some recognition, and so if you happen to see her out there, just say, you know, congrats on 10 years, and then she'll be surprised. You might see some, some target enforcement. Recently, we've had some click-it-or-ticket events, I know some people were unhappy because they got stopped, some people appreciate it because they're saying, hey, there's these people on my street that are speeding. A lot of times, as we stop the people, they live on that street, so we all can partner together to wear our seat belts, take a little bit more time, and if you call in and we talk about it, like recently I had someone talking about East Rambo and Depot Street, so I was out there the last few days stopping some cars, and so were some of my officers, so we do listen and we can, we can target it, micro-target certain areas for a little while. You would have seen the signs if you're going down Fifth Street at DeKalb, we've, now we're about probably 45 days in, we've been, we've been communicating by putting big-lighted signs out to remind everybody that it's right turn only, 7, 8, and 9A, and 4 to 6P, so we'll start doing more enforcement in the next, after the next two weeks. Our former crossing guard Manny has been underneath the weather, so if you could keep him in your prayers, if you know Manny, just keep him in your prayers. We've had some, well, we participated in the St. John of Baptist Blue Mass, we appreciated that, being invited there, and the Bridgeport Memorial Day Event with Catholic War Vets. If you have anything, other, other issues with some of the, the patrols, concerns, remember there's still curfews, so as we, we might, you might see police officers, or if you're up late at night, making contact with some folks that are, that are out in the streets. We have, had some theft from motor vehicles, tools and things like that, so I remind people, and please tell your neighbors, lock the cars, keep your valuables out of sight, so that you don't suffer any kind of losses. And I thank for the borough manager, again, for, I'll be on top of the reverse 911 system, so we'll make sure to integrate training, and hopefully we can get it for all of the property owners as well, that they can get like some sort of sheet for additional signups for every rentor, because that system is only going to be good, like Mr. Heil said, as it is participation-based, so we're going to try to get as many people to participate, maybe hit them from three different directions.
We, we are, we are bypassing the landlords, because that's, we are sending out to each address, not, exactly what you're alluding to, chief, it does us no good if we're sending, you know, a notification for 123 Front Street to Glen Side or Bryn Mawr, we're, we're going to beat the pavement and get it to the addresses, not the landlords.
So that's all, that's all good stuff, so that's all I have for you tonight, thank you.
Chief, I just want to comment and thank you for the workup of the elementary school with the field day and the graduation, I know you guys are up there a lot, and I hear it from residents, I hear it from families, they really appreciate the interaction at the elementary school. We really, we really have something pretty special here with that elementary school being in this community, and the folks appreciate you being up there, and I think so does council.
It's our pleasure.
All right, thank you, chief. Moving on to new business, are there any members of council with new business for this evening? All right, very good, moving on to announcements, are there any announcements for this evening? I know that we covered a, a number of them under committee reports, so I understand if we don't have any. I just want to jump on what Councilwoman Funahashi had, had referenced earlier. This coming week, June 21st to the 25th, is our annual carnival. Hours of operation are going to be Monday, or excuse me, Tuesday through Friday, 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Saturday, 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM, again, it will be the same amusement company, Swicus Amusements, that will be servicing the event. Have a good relationship with them, and they have proven to be, you know, high-quality, high-character people, and that's the type of folks we want in Bridgeport. We, in addition to the carnival midway itself, on the other side of the street, while it had been on a couple-year hiatus due to COVID, we're bringing back the bandstand, and beer garden, and wine garden, and local vendors area. So we will be hiring four bands this coming week. Tuesday night, our opening night, Emmanuel Ohemeng and Perpetual Motion, a jazz group that has come out the last few carnivals that we've had music, and kind of been our opening night act, talented group of guys. On Wednesday night, we will have AM radio, which is a, a local favorite. On Thursday night, excuse me, on Thursday night, we will have AM radio. On Friday night, we will have The Manatees, and who, another local, very popular band, plays at the Rib House, a lot of local gigs. And then Saturday night, we will have a new-to-the-fray group named Stay Tuned, who have actually played here under a previous iteration before called Great Big House. So in addition to the beer garden, operated by Conchaackan Brewery, and the wine garden, operated by Cardinal Hollow Winery, we will have live music and our local vendors. The beer garden, music, and wine garden begins Thursday night, and our local vendors will be out there on Saturday evening from 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM. So shaping up to be a really fun event, hope to see you all there. Any other announcements? All right, then we can turn to public comment. If there are any members of the public that wish to come forward and speak, please do Well, seeing no takers, council could certainly entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, everybody is 808. Thank you very much for coming out, appreciate your, your attention, and we will see you at the next meeting.
Yeah, let's do it up front. Didn't we do it up front last time, like this?
I think we, I think we all-
Okay, okay.
So we were, we were, we were in Atlanta, we called back over a multitude of stuff that we're-
Okay, okay.
That's right, I write. It was lovely love. So we have good memories, we have-
The man is 80 July.
Right, I see. That-
Mayor, for what?
Mayor. I assume not, it's early, I guess nothing- Hey, that's, that's, that's great, I gotta do the angle, people at home, people happy.
Exactly, you're at home.
Yeah.
You say, you have fun.
Yeah.
We're all heads. That's what I don't want to do, when you have to tell me, call the chief.
Yeah, that's funny, but, yeah, you tell them I'll support, I'll support all that, so.
Oh, yeah, if you say you get to wherever you want.
I think in the next couple days, we might be able to go over and see your father. No smoking permitted, though, right?
They should, they should see what the do is from up here.
He looks like Thor with that hammer.
Oh. Yeah, just help me down with that, I'll probably bring him outside or something.
Yeah, I'll be, be called.
Okay, all right, that-
All right, how much I love.
Oh, well.
Come together, everybody, keep it together. Oh, yeah, because, I can't, I, because I'm stuck on Thor. Can't believe Kim was in that elbow hammer, he could look like a new Thor. That's right. Love, and we'll be going to see that in the movie there.
I remember every single song that was in the first movie, I didn't remember-
Yeah.
I remember every-
Yeah, we had Lee Jon's stuff.
My experience-
Did you ever just see the runway?
No.
Yeah, you're right.
But I love, and it wasn't in-
Yeah, it was fun.
I love the football scene, and all I got to say is, they were crazy.
Yeah, I just, I'm taking some solo.
I don't want to be crazy, he said, but he's crazy smart.
Just to have to get that popped, uh-
Never. Thank God, everybody-
I'm doing, I'm doing, everybody's-
What about spots that's moving?
Yeah. Stay outside, y'all, you're fixing, your plate is y'all fixing, you're moving forward to, to make it to the side.
Raising your eyes, flexing, focus, I can't even, I have none of them yet.
Sure.
We would have no fiber problems, Charlie.
So like, say, thank you, Mary.
I can never-
How's it going?
Good.
I was just happy that everybody's cool. I feel like stuff's off.
Yes, have a good night. I mean, I'm-
Hey, hey, I see you want a couple things for the resources I was asking for, light standards, because we had those before.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna email you, like, what, I have, I have Kenny's.
Okay.
I guess we could use another one in the back parking lot.
Because you're gonna have that stuff-
To light, to light both sides of the back parking lot, yeah.
I figured the more light that we put, like, on the stamp and just, just around it, it's better, it probably will be, and then I asked for some radius, some other things, so.
If they're, yeah, I mean, listen, if, if, if they're the ones that actually have the toe behind Jenny, too, that'd be helpful.
All right, I'll see, I have a list of some other things, I might have to rally some, but get it from a couple different places, but resource-wise, I'm pretty, I'm pretty, I'm pretty certain we'll have upwards of 12 guys on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, between State, us, and Sheriff's Office.
Cool.
Because people are in spaces, they are apprehensive.
I said it is, I think it's nice just-
Everything has got all those different factors. I want to make sure that is, people feel safe.
I mean, I walk.
Everything else good? Everything's, nice stop? Chief, I got a buggy, thank you. Take it easy. See you later, bye-bye.
Have a good night, all.
Yeah, good night, Keith.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, stop, yeah, let me know what time on Friday. Okay. I'll text you, I'll let you, I'll let you know, all right? Have a good night.
My mom did say, wanted me to make sure, I said, love. How's, how's she doing? A little fragile.